Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to call our May 14, 2019 Council Meeting to order. And I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Yeah.
Ms. Schinholster?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum present. If you will, stand for the prayer and pledge with me. Let us bow. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this day, all that we've seen in it. We ask right now that you keep our hearts and our mind guarded so that we may continue to be present and thoughtful of everything that we do in light of your business for this city. We thank you right now for how you continue to look over us and how you continue to guide our way. We thank you for this, our Law Enforcement Week. We thank you for those that are looking to them and honoring them for all that they have done. This and many more prayers we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a proclamation to present tonight declaring National Salvation Army Week. And I would like to invite the participants to join me up front. Ms. Cindy Edwards and all of your team, if you will, come up front across here. The Salvation Army is an important and longstanding part of our community, and all of the hard work and caring people associated with the Salvation Army are great assets to us and to the people who go to them in times of need. I'm happy to ask the clerk to read a proclamation establishing May 12 through the 18th as National Salvation Army Week in the city of Milledgeville and to place it into the official minutes of the city of Milledgeville. Mr. DeNusa, if you will, please read the proclamation.
Whereas the Salvation Army was founded in London, England in 1865 by William and Catherine Booth with the goal of bringing comfort to the needy, ever mindful of the messages of the Bible, the love of God, and the Gospels of Jesus Christ. And whereas wholeness to the community is the Salvation Army's touchstone, to which this venerable organization attends to the needs of the residents in our community, our state, our nation, and in the world. And whereas through spiritual ministries, family residence programs, homeless shelters, alcohol and drug rehabilitation, youth services, emergency and disaster services, senior citizen programs, prison visitation programs, summer camps, educational programs, job training, family and thrift stores, and Christmas assistance, the elite team that is the Salvation Army is able to harness the energy of the community to provide for those in need. Whereas it is proper and fitting to highlight the Salvation Army's work in the city of Milledgeville. Now therefore, I, Mary Parham Copeland, as mayor of the city of Milledgeville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through 18, 2019, as National Salvation Army Week in the city of Milledgeville, and encourage the citizens of Milledgeville to exalt the Salvation Army and their many programs that strengthen our humanity.
We're so thankful that Ms. Cindy Edwards Ward, Ms. Cindy Ward Edwards, is here, and she wears so many hats. So we're just going to say thank you for wearing the hat of the Salvation Army Executive Director tonight. Thank you so much, and thank your team.
Thank you. Yeah, y'all get in the middle, y'all just swap places, like. Center everybody around, okay?
I think Mr. Billy tried to get it all in on us. Okay. We also have two awards to present tonight. It's always nice to present an award to someone, and it's especially nice when our own hard-working city employees who are recognized for the jobs they do. I would like to invite our new water and sewer director, Robert Haddon, up front. Please come up front, Miss Haddon. Both these prestigious awards were presented by the Georgia Association of Water Professionals to our water treatment plant and our wastewater treatment plant for the excellence and professionalism in protecting our water resources. I am presenting the 2018 Gold Award to our waste treatment facility. They receive this for going the full year meeting and exceeding their permitting and monitoring requirements. Okay, and this is the Gold Award. I hope I'm handing you the right one, yes ma'am. It doesn't say, but I'm going to present you with both of them. And then the other one that we're presenting is the Platinum Award. It was presented to the water treatment plant because they have not received a single permitting violation in five years. Let's give them a hand. On behalf of the city council, I would like to thank everyone for working so hard to make sure we meet and exceed our water quality benchmarks. So, and if you can, let's get them in. So it's the Gold Award and the Platinum Award. We're so proud of Mr. Haddon. He is our new water.
Got to just flip around a little bit. There you go. Super.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to introduce to you and city council, Mr. Michael Birch. He was hired as our superintendent of water treatment. I'd like everybody to welcome him.
Stand up, Mr. Birch. And I'm going to be the first to shake your hand. Come on up. Okay, you all have received a copy of the April 23, 2019 Council Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections or discussion? Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt. Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. We have two public hearings tonight. The first is to consider amending the Land Development Code, and the second is to gain public input on the proposed 2020 manual operating budget. The procedure for conducting the hearing to amend the Land Development Code will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code. We will then hear a report from the Planning and Zoning Director, including the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Council will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, but the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. Please make sure that before you speak, that you give your name and address for the record. The first public hearing we have to consider tonight is ordinance O-1902-04 rezoning 700 Dunlap Road from SR1 to O1, which is Office Institution. Has the public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th day of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the city of Milledgeville, Georgia, ordinance rezoned property located at 700 Dunlap Road.
Okay, I will recognize the zoning administrator for a report to include the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Merv Graham.
This was approved with a, where it is, with a three to two vote, but this is just for office institutional zone. I know this has already been an article in the paper concerning a school wanting to lease this property. Before that can go forward, this property has to come back again for a special use. I think that started prior to this current rezon. But right now, they're just looking at the OI, Office Institutional Zone, and for the school to be there, then, like I say, it will have to come back for special use.
Did this property, has it come before P&amp;Z before?
It has. It was previously-
Looking for a commercial?
For a CC zone, and now they've come about for OI zone, and that did pass, you know, the planning and zoning, and so this is it.
Thank you.
Can you enlighten me as to, I should say, as to what all is covered under Office Institutional?
It's mainly offices, you know, doctors' offices, dental offices, your offices that are eight to five, and then also schools, primary and secondary schools, elementary. They are a special use within that, but you do have hospitals that could also go into a OI zoning, but-
And something like that can go into it without a special use?
I'm not sure about a hospital that may need a special use because most of the big public assemblies do. I'd have to actually look that up, but I do know schools are a special use for that.
Thank you. Is the applicant or anyone else present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment? Okay, please step to the podium, state your name and your address for us, please.
Hey, my name is Keisha Pierce, and I am the listing agent for the Church of the Nazarene that owns the property at 700 Dunlap Road. And we wanted to go OI prior to receiving a tentative contract from a group in the community who is putting together the new Milledgeville Prep Christian School. And so we've got a contract written up to where they're going to lease to purchase for one year, and then after that one year, they are required to purchase the property. The reason that they have requested the lease is because they can't get a loan to mortgage that property until their school is established for one year. So if this passes this evening, then tomorrow I am going to immediately file for the special use for that property to be turned into the new Milledgeville Prep, Milledgeville Preparatory Academy, I think is the name of it. So that's the intention for that property right now, if it works out.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't state my address. I'm sorry.
Well, you're well into it now. Thank you. Well, she needs your ad, I'm sorry, the clerk needs your address, please.
Okay. Keisha Pierce, 151 Covey Road, southwest, Milledgeville.
And if you will, please remain just a moment. We have a council person that has a question for you.
Okay.
Okay, I, you know, just hearing what you're saying, and so the long-term plans for that particular strip is for a Christian school, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, I just can't help but think that that's really in a dangerous place for traffic. So my concern is about the traffic that will be turning, because it's kind of like over a hill. There's a hill and a curve there, and then people are coming up another hill from the other direction, and you will have people turn, making left turns, and, well, I mean, have you all thought about that, as far as how you're going to deal with that?
Well, I know there's a flashing caution light very close, and there's also a daycare right across the street, so I think hopefully people are used to going more slowly there. And also, there's also already in place two driveways, so it would be fairly easy for the school to have people come in, you know, and make a circle there to move out. That's really the only thought that we've given to it, as far as I know, that they've given to it, that they're going to try to make them come in, you know, in that circular drive.
And I also noticed that they're, across the street from where you are, they're building a new commercial building in that section, so do you think the traffic is going to conflict with one another in, right in that little area? Because I, you know, I really, I just think about that curve right there, coming up to that, right, right where you're going to be, that curve and that hill, so that really concerns me, for traffic to be turning in and out of both driveways at the same time.
If I can add to that, I think what concerns me as much is that you've got the daycare that is across the street, and you're going to have simultaneous heavy traffic at the same time.
Right. That's, I'm really concerned about that.
You're going to have a lot of dropping off at the same time, you're going to have a lot of leaving at the same time, and they're in opposite directions, and it's, you know, the caution light-
A little far away from that.
Is just that. I'm a little bit, I want to ask this question, and I'm assuming the building is part of this purchase, the present building, and the school will operate out of that present building, or is there-
That's correct.
Okay.
There are plans for an addition to that current building, though, right?
I think so. After they've purchased it, I think they're going to have to make some additions to the building. There's nearly eight acres there, so I think they do want to hopefully do well and expand. But as to your question about the flow of traffic and there being a new building across the street, I really don't have any experience in that area.
Yeah, yeah. That's your problem.
Mrs. Jordan, I'm going to ask a question then. So since they've posted and put it out there, that probably would come, if that's approved later on, we would come back to that as, to look at the traffic flow or the study there?
Yeah, right now, you're being asked simply to rezon it to Office Institutional. You know, it's a little bit difficult because you don't know what's going to be there if it's not going to be the school that's going to be apparently the next application that is going to be presented, but the issues of dealing with the school, the traffic and so forth, will definitely play when that special use is requested. With respect to where it sits right now, as simply Office Institutional, there, you know, there are offices along that road already, and so I don't know that that's a basis. You know, it may be when it comes back for, I was just trying to look on Google Earth, it may be when it comes back for the special use, there has to be consideration given to putting in a D cell lane. I think there is a D cell lane across the street going into this office park that is over there. I'm not sure if there is one relative to the school, the daycare.
Okay, good. If not.
But it's going to have to be, our engine, you know, definitely with Dunlap the way it is, and as congested as it already is, there probably will need to be some input from our engineering department as to what conditions you may or may not want to put on that school. You may not want to put any, but I think you have to give that some thought.
Okay. Any more questions from the panel? Okay, thank you so much.
Not at this point.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Okay, is there any rebuttal from the applicant? No, we don't have anybody speaking in opposition, so there's no rebuttal. Are there any questions or comments from the council other than what has already been given?
One thing I'd like to ask, and I can remember when this property came up before P&amp;Z, and I had, some of this is in my district. I know there was concern when we were looking at- Commercial? And certainly because of all hours of, that a business could be open, things of that nature, and this does tend to fall a little bit more so into keeping with a eight-to-five type situation or an office hours, whatever, if they're looking at a school. I can't envision in my mind exactly if there are buffers that are present on the property, and wanted to know if anybody can tell me that. Are backyards of the neighborhood open to the property as such, or have neighbors, or have-
No, it does. There's a fence, and that's it. There's no-
There's no tree line or anything of that nature?
The trees that are right there at the existing building that separate the other property from, of your property are minimal, but then behind that, it's, there's what is, as far as the-
As the depth of the property is what you're talking about, as it goes, the additional acreage on down toward the end of Robin Court.
Right.
Would be adjacent to Robin Court, and coming back up into, where is that, Tanglewood, I guess, would be.
It is.
All the way back around to there, or Briar, Briar Flow, Briar Wood. Okay.
Any other council members have any more comments? All right, this concludes the presentation of the evidence in this matter. Members of councils, you have heard the ordinance and the evidence presented. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept the findings of the P&amp;Z board and approve the request.
Second.
Okay. If there's any further discussion on the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code, this is a properly motion as second. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye, for now. For now.
All right, this concludes the first, this concludes the first public hearing. The second public hearing is to gain public input into the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 annual operating budget. The procedure for conducting this public hearing will be as follows. Once it has been determined that this public hearing has been properly advertised, the clerk will read the ordinance as a first reading. We will then hear from anyone who would like to comment regarding the proposed budget. If anyone wishes to speak, they are encouraged to do so. If you do speak, I ask that you come to the podium and that you give your name and address for the record. Has this public hearing been properly advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O-1904-12 by caption as a first reading.
An ordinance to adopt fiscal year 2020 annual operating budget, beginning July 1, 2019, and ending on June 30, 2020, to adopt the five-year capital improvements program to make the budget available for inspection, to outline the adoption schedule, and for other purposes.
Okay, is there anyone present who would like to speak regarding the proposed 2020 annual operating budget? Okay, this concludes the budget public hearing. This is the first reading, and this ordinance is scheduled to come back before this body for adoption at our next council meeting. Under our old business, we have the second reading and adoption of ordinance O-1904-10, amending the code of ordinance to add language creating a stormwater utility. I will ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinance to the city of Milledgeville, Georgia, at chapter 92, provide for a new Article V stormwater utility, to provide for definitions, to provide for a stormwater utility service area, to provide a statement of purposes and findings of fact, to provide for scope of responsibility for stormwater management systems and facilities, to provide for the establishment of stormwater user fee charges, to provide for stormwater utility customer classes, to provide the method for establishment of stormwater user fee charge rates, to provide for stormwater user fee charge exemptions, to provide for stormwater user fee charge credits, to provide for inspections and enforcement, to provide for stormwater user fee billing, delinquencies, collection, and adjustments, to provide for appeals, to provide an effective date, to provide for severability, to restate and reaffirm the code of ordinances as modified hereby, to repeal all code provisions, ordinances, and parts thereof in conflict herewith and for other purposes.
Okay, you have heard the ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move, we approve.
This is first reading. Second.
Okay, let me get that motion again, because it's going to die. You have heard the ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move, we approve.
I second, I second the motion.
Okay, this is a property motion as second. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
No.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
No.
Okay, the ordinance is approved. I will move to new business and ask the clerk to read ordinance O-1904-11 by caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinance to the city of Milledgeville, Georgia, at chapter 86, by adding a new Article V entitled Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety System, for the purpose of authorizing the use of automated traffic enforcement safety devices in school zones within the city, to provide for rules of operation, administration, and enforcement, to provide definitions, to provide for severability, to provide an effective date, to repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and for other purposes.
This is the first reading of this ordinance, and it will come back before council at a later date. We do have some appointments tonight. We have four appointments to make tonight regarding our employee appeals procedure for those employees hired on or before March 31, 1997. I would like to appoint Police Chief Dre Swiger, Fire Chief William Coyer, and Public Works Director Tim Thomas as pre-adverse hearing officers under the city's personnel policies and procedures. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schinholster?
Aye.
Appointments are confirmed. Next, I would like to appoint Attorney Tom Richardson as the post-adverse hearing officer under the city's personnel policies and procedures. Do I hear a motion?
Move, we approve.
Second.
I would like- I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
The appointments are confirmed. We don't have any alcohol beverage license applications to consider tonight. With that being said, no further business to discuss. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned.